Good evening. I now call the order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and as a courtesy, make sure that your cellphones are all turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on www minnehahacounty.org for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, April 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, May 15th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings at the County Commission are also held in this same room. Action taking on the zoning applications during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, May 22nd at or after 9:00 AM. And meetings at the County Commission are also held in this same room, and the decision of the County Commission will be final. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the March 26, 2018 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any item listed on the consent agenda? As there are none, I will read each item on the consent agenda.
An objection, or I have an item to move. Item number five, the petitioner has informed us or requested a deferral and noted that they have not sent out the notices for the action, and so we can remove item number five from the agenda.
Thanks, Kevin. I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand, and that item will be moved to the regular agenda, and that will allow you time to address the commission later in the meeting. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the March 26, 2018 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 18-17 to allow a contractor's outdoor storage on the property, let's see here, it's I-29 Brick is the petitioner. Property owner is TFR Leasing, it is approximately 1.5 miles east of Crooks. Item number three is conditional use permit 18-18 to amend Cup 16-56 to exceed 5,000 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 5,550 square feet. The petitioner is Rich Leafstead, property owner Todd Olson, is approximately four miles west of Sioux Falls. Item number four is conditional use permit 18-19 to amend another cup which is 06-04 to allow treatment of trace chemotherapy and pathological materials on a property. Petitioner is Bob Vanderlinde, he is also the property owner, is approximately two miles north of Sioux Falls. Item number five is going to be deferred. Item number six, conditional use permit 18-22 to exceed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building area. The petitioner is Steve Jones, he is also the property owner, is located approximately one mile northeast of Humboldt. Item number seven, a conditional use permit 18-23 to allow a telecommunications tower on a property located, let's see here, it's approximately four miles southwest of Colton. Petitioner is Kurt Walter from Verizon Wireless, the property owner is Todd Bundy. Okay, we will move item number seven to the regular agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda with taking off item number five and item number seven.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department, and first, we should at least address item number five, since it's been removed, we can request the deferral for one month to the next commission meeting.
To defer item 18-20 for one month.
Second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded to defer item number five, the conditional use permit 18-20, and that was for a telecommunications tower, one mile west of Brandon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Now, item number seven, conditional use permit number 18-23 to allow a telecommunications tower, this will be located approximately one and a half miles west of Lyons and 1.25 miles east of Tri Valley School, located here, as the map shows. This item, the petitioner is requesting to construct a 190-foot monopole tower on the subject tower on the property. Typically, a radio communications tower is a permitted special use, but it is located within a minimum distance of three miles from the nearest tower, and which is the reason why we have this hearing as a conditional use permit. The tower is used primarily for communication purposes, for cellular power. The tower will abide by all Federal Aviation Administration regulations, including painting and lighting, which, from staff's understanding, it does not need painting and lighting because of the height of the tower being less than 200 feet. The location of the proposed tower, as noted by the petitioner, is positioned in order to receive better cellular communications between the school and the town of Lyons, and it's currently proposed on a parcel that's currently agricultural cropland, and the nearest three dwellings are located just to the east of the property, and all three of those dwellings are related individuals and are consenting to the project. Two of them did need to sign a waiver to allow this project to move forward, and the two that required it did sign the waiver. As a communications tower, the plans have been submitted, and it does show that it will be set back far off the road, and that setback is placed there in order to meet the setback requirements of 1,300 feet from the nearest dwelling, and that would be the distance that's needed without a waiver, as noted earlier. And the tower will have to continue to work with the county ordinance article number 12-13 and additional use regulations, and that regulates tower design setbacks and illumination. The tower will be required to be following these regulations for construction and maintenance The conditional use permit criteria, and we consider for all conditional use permit actions, there's five of them, or six of them, excuse me, and the first one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity, and the use is already permitted, and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. The area around the proposed site is primarily composed of agricultural land. Its proximity to the Village of Lyons and Tri Valley School was noted as a primary reason for the tower's placement. The tower appears not to need any safety lights or special markings because of its low height, and the absence of light should minimize negative impacts surrounding properties. And the increase in cellphone coverage may be a positive change for nearby cellular uses. Number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The areas around the proposed site will likely remain predominantly agriculture, however, several building eligibilities are available in the surrounding area, and the visual aspect of the tower should have little impact on agricultural production. The utilities, access road, drainage, or necessary facilities are provided. The tower is located within an existing farm, it has access, it will have access to utilities and easements, as shown on the plan, along the west side of the property. The long setback of the road should help reduce aesthetic concerns from the highway and nearby residences. The off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The distance from the road and the proposed gravel area around the support structure should be enough to support parking. The measures are taken control offensive odor, fumes, noise, dust, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute nuisance. The proposed tower will not produce significant odor, fumes, dust, or noise, or vibration during regular operation. The tower is not required by the FAA to have lighting. The Minnehaha County zoning ordinance requires that the tower uses minimum FAA requirements in that the FAA may change regulations to require safety lights. The FAA requires safety lights in the future, lights must not exceed the minimum requirements. The health, safety, general welfare in the public and the comprehensive plan, the day-to-day operations of proposed land use will have minimal effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The proposed structure is 199 feet tall with the lightning rod, and the nearest dwelling is over 1,000 feet away, separated by a grove of trees. The property should include reasonable safety, security from climbers and vandals. Many towers in the county have a six-foot high-security fence with barbed wire on top. A fence such as this would help prevent climbers and vandals from causing the facility harm or themselves. The petitioner has included plans to place this fence around the facility. Staff finds that the proposed telecommunications tower meets the zoning requirements and conforms to the comprehensive plan, and recommends approval for a conditional use permit 18-23 with the following conditions. The facility shall meet the requirements of Article 12.12 of the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance with the exception of 12.12(c)(3). A letter of removal responsibility shall be submitted to the Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number three, a building permit is required prior to the erection of the tower. Number four, a six-foot high-security fence shall be placed around the tower to discourage climbers and vandals. And number five, all security lighting shall be shoebox style that directs light downward to prevent spillage of light to neighboring properties. I'll just go through a couple of pictures. A little closer up of the site plan, just the road continues on and has one operating, the kind of building there, structure to support the use of the tower and with co-locations. This photo is taken from Lyons looking in the direction of west. It'll be, the tower will be right on top of that hill, kind of in that open area, or right around there. This is looking from the north of the site, along a little driveway. The setback will be about 1,300 feet from the road. This is looking kind of into that grove of trees, which will be the nearest neighbors to the proposed tower. And this picture shows to the east, there's a, kind of down the road, there's a grove of trees, and to the north of that is the nearest neighbor to the north, which is in this picture. And that's all I have for you, is any questions?
Jeff?
Someone else ask a question.
As a petitioner here, will you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Walter, I represent Verizon Wireless on their tower siting in Minnehaha County. I'm sure you guys have had cellphone towers before, so I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Why this particular site?
This one, we're trying to cover both the school and the town of Lyons with one tower, hence the setback variance from the K-Yellow Tower to the north. This location puts us right smack in the middle, and we can cover both with one facility. It's low enough that doesn't need lighting, we meet all the setbacks from all the neighboring properties, except for the ones that are owned by our landowner's father and the son. This site, it's the middle of a farm field, and shouldn't, covers our needs and meets most of the county setbacks. Is that good enough? Okay.
You're, I'm sure that you're going to be fully aware of the FAA and anything that's, any problems there.
Yes, typically, under 200 feet, we don't even need to file for FAA. There, I don't believe there are any public airfields or things within three miles, so I don't even think we'll be filing for FAA, but...
Scott, just a point of clarification, even if this were to go through tonight, and I do want to hear from the other folks on the crowd here, but even if this were to go through and FAA denies it, I mean, you're still that permit process after the fact, correct?
Well, if, for some reason, FAA denied it, then it would not be able to be built.
That's the point I'm getting at.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I guess, for staff. Scott, the Arrow State Center, that wouldn't be an issue?
It falls well outside that zone.
That's okay.
Okay, I think we have some opposition in the crowd. Would you like to come forward, state your name and address?
Jay Huesman, I live at 46562, 252nd Street, which would be bird's eye view right of the tower.
I'm Chris Christiansen, 46580, 252nd Street, and the picture of the house is mine, which is straight north.
The front window goes directly to the tower.
Right, from my living room window, if I look straight south, is where the tower is.
I would say issues property values. I've found on multiple things that are 94 percent, I gotta find it here, said they would not even buy or rent that close. And any values were decreased, property values decreased by 20 percent, if you found somebody to buy it.
Or more.
Or more, yeah. And lightning strikes have increased 137 percent within a two-mile radius of a cell tower. And any tower that had been built and a neighboring had damages, good luck fighting the big company lawyer, you can't get nothing. It's been issues as wiring fire in housing, trees damaged. Of course, nobody can prove the cancer deal, so you know, that's... But the tower will go up, and at that many feet, you're saying it's safe for that emissions? And if you look on that tower, it says room for other providers, so that means there'll be more antennas put on it, so... And for, I got four to five bars through Verizon, right there. Mile and a half north is a TV tower that's how many hundred feet tall, and you're saying, they're saying that that's not feasible. You already got access to that tower. I'd like to know where the next closest cell tower is towards Del Rapids. I mean, there's a lot of other communities with a lot more population that don't need a cell tower a mile and a half away. One of the employees from Rosenbauer stopped by, and I told him they were, I knew him from before, and I said, "Well, they're going to build a tower right there." He said, "Why?" I said, "Well, you don't have any, be able to use your phone in the buildings." Well, that's new to me. And I don't know of the issue with the school. We have got fiber optic just dug in last year, so there should be plenty of access to internet. But I think the one tower is north of Hartford and one's north of Colton, but you have nothing going all the way that I know of, Verizon doesn't, all the way to Baltic, Del Rapids. And there's no reason this gap needs to be filled. I do have a picture of my lockout on my house with retaining walls, and it looks directly that quarter mile to where that's going to be. And I think there's, they want to stay under the 200 feet because then they don't have to go through regulations. And then there's other issues, it says, your levels are too high, you can buy this paint for your house, or you can put foil under your roof, you know, on a block, any microwaves, which there's some in the air everywhere, you know, but I don't feel I should have to do that after finally getting to my place 10 years ago to where I wanted to be.
And I am worried about the visual effects from my property, looking out my living room window, straight at this. Did you cover property value going down with this being my view out my house? I am worried about the health concerns, it is not, they say it's not proven here, but if you read in other countries, it has been proven, and even if here, they say there is not an effect, that doesn't mean, it's more how the public perceives, is there a health risk of a tower being that close, and the resale value of our homes, and their belief that there is a risk in our property value going down because of that risk, if we would want to sell. Even buyers knowing that there's possibly health risks, that they would seek a price discount on the property, knowing that if they would want to sell it, that they would come up with the same, that potential buyers would perceive that there was health risk there also. And also, you know, the media, the adverse effects of the media on the health concerns of towers, also, you know, makes it more of a potential problem with the public listening, you know, to possible risks, and that hurting our property value. I believe that the tower that is, they say is one and a half miles from our house, I'm not sure why they are not able to use this tower, because the distance from that tower to these two locations would be approximately the same to the school and to Lyons as it would be from this tower. And that one's already built, like he said, and has access. Another potential location, if they are looking for a location, an elevator was put in down in Lyons, that is another potential place I think that would, they could look at for it because of the railroad and elevator going in there, that is already has a commercial setting where it would not affect our homes in the rural setting that we are sitting in right now, and, you know, they've already, they're looking at that, the elevator and trains coming in and with the grain bins, and a tower next to those, I would not change the view from down there when you're considering a cell tower versus an elevator that are several grain bins.
You seen the picture that he flashed through, there was a picture of that facility. They had already have road access back in, and we'd have, what, maintenance going on at that tower at maybe any hours of the day if it was right there, the construction of it. Like, my wife slept three hours and 30 minutes last night because they loaded the 100 cars down there through the night at the elevator, bang, 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 well, why not move this facility into, you know, I think they're just afraid they're going to go over the 200 feet and have to comply to some more fees, but...
I mean, my thought is, there's, there's better options than this agricultural that, I mean, being a Taiwan tower is already there available to use, but it's not their tower, which I'm assuming they would have to, you know, pay some to use that, but it already is, and there'd be service there, and just not affect our rural setting and our property value and the view from our homes.
Are there any questions of the Christians?
I would ask a couple, I guess.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Did you find a study that showed property values would go down if, if there was a communication tower nearby?
I just Googled it, more or less, and it was Palo Alto, California, was that one.
The appraisal journey, journal, did a story on it also, about the effects on your property value.
And the radiation or whatever, you've got four bars already, has it affected your health in any way?
Well, that's why, I've had anxiety disorder for 29 years, and I was, this kind of surprised me as I got into this. That was a year after I got a wire put in here and two metal posts in here. They're saying even kids with metal braces have had to have them removed because they were as serious as seizures.
And so you found that on the internet also?
There are several, you know, reports from other countries that they even go into dairy cows with a reduced production of milk, being near cell towers, and they have removed the dairy cows from the area and took them, I believe it was four miles away, and the production went back up, and they are also, well, they said like depressed cows, they just acted different, and after being gone two weeks, that milk production increased and their energy level and how they acted changed, and when they brought them back to the area by the cell tower, their milk production again reduced, and they went back into the same behavior of acting depressed. But there's several studies in different countries where, the US has one of the, should I say, slackest regulations for cell towers.
And then as far as, you know, cell damage to your body, my wife has MS, she's had it for 15 years. We lived in Hartford, we moved out there, and within about three years, she went from getting a shot every day to taking two pills. So, I mean, it may not hurt a healthy person, but somebody that's already susceptible to it?
Any other questions?
I'd like to show you a picture of my lockout, if I could.
Is there any other opposition?
I'll have you over there.
What's that? That's our fancy, on the...
Right? Right under there? Here. How do you open up the end? George, you have to take the picture.
What's that going to show?
There we go. You can blow it up. Kevin, can't you make it? Kevin, can't you make a figure?
Did you, did it die?
Put it back on there. Put it.
That's my main patio.
Is that Tri Valley in the background?
No.
No. That right there, exactly straight out from the center of that is where the tower's gonna be.
Gotcha.
I have, uh, let me see if this other one pulls up.
I do also have concerns about the traffic and them, you know, going in and out of this because of the school traffic. Um, and then kids driving by. Um, every year I have kids driving into my fence. Um, and that it, um, last year or the year before, it was on the last day of school, dry pavement. And a child drove into my pasture fence. Every year I have it, I would say one kid at least driving into my fence and I need to repair it. And I do have horses there also, so when we're talking about livestock and stuff, I am concerned about my horses too. And how it affects.
That dead center is right where the tower's gonna be. That tall evergreen to the, uh, right. And then go to the left in between them, two shorter ones. It's exact, there's not a tree to block anything, there's not a nothing.
Okay, um. I have another question for the petitioner after you guys are, I guess there's somebody else. Will you please come forward? You know, when you were, okay, when you were vetting locations or whatever, was this the best possible location that you thought would be good for, I guess you said it was for what, the school mainly?
Um, to clarify this, this is not about coverage. You can stand right there and have good coverage and make a cellphone call. This is about capacity. Everybody's using more, um, so this particular location will cover the additional capacity for the school and for the, the town of Lyons. So, this is our best location. It's almost exactly in between the two of them. Um, so it, it gets good, I'll use the word coverage because it does cover these two areas. It, um, takes the traffic of the phone calls that are on other cell towers and puts it all on this one. So, this particular proposed tower will take all of the cellphone calls for three mile radius at least. And yes, this was the best location. We did look at the radio tower to the north and that's about three quarters of a mile farther away from both locations. Uh, you get that far away, that, that puts it about two miles away from both the school and the town. You start losing your in-building coverage. Uh, we wouldn't be able to consistently have goods, and it's not necessarily about cellphone calls, it's mostly the, the capacity is on, uh, the wireless internet and all the Twitters and Facebooks and all that other stuff that everybody's doing. So, that's what this location will, will fix. Um, if we go to, uh, like the grain elevator that was mentioned here, it covers the town of Lyons wonderfully, but it doesn't even touch the school. We'd have to build another one over there by the school. So, and if I can, um, in the handouts that, that you were given, these Verizon pages does have, um, statistics and, um, excuse me, references to where those, um, statistics came from. Gets you into the wireless, the trends of what's happening, why we expect to have, uh, our existing capacity in the area will be exhausted here in about two years. Um, everybody will be starting to drop phone calls and other things. But the last page that has a Verizon thing is, gets into the importance of wireless coverage to homeowners and buyers. It actually gets into and it references different, um, what am I trying to say? Different, um, papers or studies that have been done on all of these, these items. So, um, there are trends that anecdotal evidence, we've, our nearest tower in agriculture area is five miles south of that. Does well. We haven't seen any lightning strike problems. Our towers are grounded really well. Uh, we have about three hundred thousand dollars worth of electrical equipment. We're not gonna have any stray electricity there at all. It's, it's probably the best grounded thing that you have anywhere. Our next site is actually in the city of, um, Crooks. It's within about a hundred feet of several homes. I've not heard of any anecdotal evidence that any property values have dropped down in there. You're familiar with all the cellphone towers that are actually in the city of Sioux Falls, uh, right next to houses. And there's been, there's been antennas on water towers for the last thirty years for any health things you have. So, if there's any other questions, I can.
Jeff?
Did, uh, did you look at doing, uh, the tower right on the Tri Valley campus, so to speak?
If we do that, then we have to put another one in, in the city of Lyons, or town of Lyons. So, this was the best option. Uh, we do meet all the setbacks. We're thirteen hundred feet from the road, which puts us about well over a quarter a mile away from their houses. So, it's probably an extra a hundred feet of right of way, another fifty feet. So, we're probably fourteen hundred and fifty feet away from the the closest home to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, discussion?
I have a question for Doug, old buddy, old pal. So, you know, with the cattle, uh, dairy, uh, operation, cell towers don't cause any stray voltage issues, right? They wouldn't, would they?
Not that I'm aware of. I know they stated, you know, the cows went up in production. Well, I'd like to know more about where you got your information. Were they still on the same feed ration? Was housing totally different than the existing site that they did come from? Those all play a big factor in production with dairy cows. So, I, not saying you're wrong, but I s- have a hard time totally believing everything you said about the loss of milk production and, you know, maybe, maybe the place, maybe they had stray voltage on that site already and they took them off and they didn't have stray voltage. There's so many variables there, so to bring that up, I think that's stretching it.
Stray voltage is an issue though for.
It is, yeah. It's a big, it, it can affect reproduction, milk production, uh, your somatic cell count, uh, everything, but.
Sir, you have to come to the podium.
And identify yourself.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Nate Stroshine. I work for a power company. Um, stray voltage issue is most of the time with the, uh, power lines and the underground.
Right.
And the, the, uh, ground grid.
The, uh.
I have not heard of anything on cell towers or anything like that. It's usually with the.
Three phase with one phase out or something like that.
What's that?
Three-phase power with one phase.
Three-phase, single-phase.
Yeah, oh.
We work with it. I'm not in, in the engineering, but they work with it like in Wisconsin and things like that. If you want more information about stray voltage, you could contact power company. My experiences with it, it's, it comes from the energy source and not the communication. So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Motion?
I move approval of conditional use permit number eighteen dash twenty-three to allow a telecommunications tower on the property legally described as track one Bundy's addition.
I'll second it.
Yes, with the conditions that were read.
This has been made in the second. I'd approve conditional use permit eighteen dash three to allow a telecommunications tower um, on the property, five miles southeast of Colton. All this in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. If your item was approved on the consent agenda, you are free to go. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Is our motion approved, the regular agenda?
So moved. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Okay. Item number eight is a conditional use permit eighteen dash ten to allow class C swine concentrated animal feeding operation. Approximately nine hundred and sixty animal units. This item was deferred from the, the March Planning Commission meeting for um, the applicant to work with the Springwater Township Minnesota on issues with the road access. This property is located about approximately a mile and a half northeast of the city of Garrettson, as you can see on this line right here. This gray shaded area right here is the state of Minnesota and here's South Dakota and the property lies right on the boundary line. As you can see, the entire property is outlined in red is the subject property of the request. The, so here's the road and, um, that splits right between the two, right along the state line. Which the Springwater Township maintains con, um, authority over that. So, the, the applicant, um, the deferral was to allow the applicant to work with the township about maintenance issues that may arise beyond, um, normal maintenance of the road itself. So, moving forward, um, not spending too much time on that as this is a deferral. This is the exhibit that the applicant provided is the site plan. Um, no, excuse me, um, this is not the site plan. This is the, shows the setback map. This is a a quarter mile distance, which for a class C operation of this size is the minimum required setback for residential dwellings. Um, the larger circle around this is a half mile setback, which, as you can see, this is where that road would've been to the south, um, the nearest highway. This is, and the site itself is located on the half mile. So, not dwelling on that too much. Going into the site plan itself, which shows the, the detail of the particular site, the applicant is proposing about a three hundred ninety-three and a half foot by fifty-one foot structure. Be located right here, as you can see in the image, um, with the driveway coming right off the gravel road towards that. The applicant has indicated a enclosure facility for any dead animal disposal. Um, and that's located here, screened from public view, which is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. Um, the concentrated animal feeding operation section of the ordinance. Um, there is a, an existing, or what's classified as an intermittent stream on the property through the United States Geological Survey, seven and a half minute topographical maps, which runs along here. The, the applicant's building meets all of the required setbacks for the environmental features such as the stream. Um, is a minimum of a hundred feet away from that stream. This is an image that's been provided by the applicant, which shows certain odor control measures, which has been provided in the staff report. And the applicant can clarify on the details of that. Just showing some of the pictures for, of the site, as you can see, this is looking along this, the half mile line. The driveway would be roughly in this area in the foreground, um, and looking off to the northeast, you can see where that um, continuation of that driveway would be towards the building itself. Just looking northwest towards the building, as you can see, there's a little bit of indication of some water. Um, these pictures were taken about a month ago, so you can see some of the snow in for, in the foreground there where that, roughly where that creek, that stream would be. This is looking north towards, this is the Minnesota side, as you recall, and then, um, as you can see in the, off in the distance, the, there is and one of the nearest dwellings is located to, exactly to the northeast of the site, which is, just falls with inside that, that half mile big circle there, where that shelter belt is uh, of trees. This is looking south back towards where the highway would be, just to the south beyond that hill. Um, this is at the half mile, the fence post and the sign. This is the existing farmstead that was inside that shelter belt that I just described. Um, as you can see the barn in the distance there. This is on the, the Minnesota side. This is looking from that intersection where the, that house is located that I just described, looking towards the north along the township road there. So, to ex, about a half mile to the north of the subject property, there is an existing, there's some cattle out there, um, on this property. And then if you look even further to, this is even further than a half mile away, there's an open lot cattle yard located to the northwest of this site just beyond the, the red shaded, the red outlined area. And that is all, that's all the pictures that I have, um, just going through some of the criteria that we take into effect with conditional use permits. Um, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Um, as you can see, the entire property located in this area is primarily farmland, as you can see here, um, with a few residential dwellings within the immediate vicinity, as I've described. And this meets all of the requirements for the setback requirements. Two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. As I've described, this area is primarily farmland in the area. There are, um, little residential acreages in the area. Um, if there are additional dwellings that would be built, it would be with building eligibility, with, um, transfer building eligibility, so it would have to go through this body. The petitioner has stated that they own enough or have enough acres in the vicinity for manure application from the proposed facility, swine operation. Um, there is, since this is a new facility, there is nothing there currently. It's currently farmland. There is potential for creating concerns for, um, buyers and developers of future land in the area for those building eligibility's that they may want to build a house in this area. Um, there may be some potential smell or other odors that may can result from this type of facility. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage and/or other necessary facilities are provided. The, that county highway is located just half mile to the south of this site, which provides access to this proposed operation. The, the petitioner plans to use, um, well water to the site. As was described, this, the, this item was deferred to allow the petitioner to work with the adjacent township, which governs the authority for road management of the road to work out those issues. Um, to ensure safe access to the road and, um, among other things. Four, that the safe off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The, the, the site itself sits on about a, a one and a half acre site, which accommodates, as you can see on the site plan, enough area for parking on that site. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. There are particular concerns that may be presented, such as odor and other, um, issues. Things like dust control from, uh, traffic that may be generated from the proposed use, since this is a new operation. There may be additional, um, conditions that could be added as far as dust control on the road for mani- or mitigating those potential concerns that may arise from construction of the facility and or operation of, um, the facility itself. The applicant has provided a plan for odor management. As indicated, the, um, the area for dead animal disposal plans located adjacent to that road with screening. Um, six, that health, safety, general welfare of the public and comprehensive plan. This, uh, the proposed operation will like, unlikely cause a significant increase to the public health, safety and welfare concerns because of the low density of residential dwelling units in the immediate vicinity. units in the immediate vicinity. This operation must comply with the conditions of the permit itself. These rules are, and regulations are designed to mitigate the concerns, preventing much of the harms that a, this type of facility of this size may create. And lastly, the subject property is located within the agricultural production area of the envisioned twenty thirty of com, envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, which goal number three, page ninety, ninety-one defines the sole purpose of this. Planning category is to protect, preserve and promote agricultural uses and the economic vitality of farming operations. In this, the result of this, there is an evaluation step to allow for, an opportunity for community feedback, which this facility requires a conditional use for intensive agricultural development in the rural area. So staff finds that the proposed use for a Class C finisher swine concentrated animal feeding operation is consistent with the goals and actions of the envisioned twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen dash ten, and there are a total of nine conditions on the permit. I will read them, but as I've, I've read them at the last public hearing, if, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David?
David, the Garrettson Gazette said that the nine hundred and sixty animal unit barn could actually have twenty-four hundred head of hogs there. Could you define us, an animal unit and with piglets, it's different than with hogs, right? I'm just concerned about what it said in the Garrettson Gazette there, which seems to be, you know, a higher number than nine sixty.
Excuse me, one second. Yes.
I know a hundred chickens equals an animal unit. I'm, I'm just curious if there's a multiple of piglet that makes an animal unit.
So, so the, the applicant has, has stated that the swine would be over fifty-five pounds, so finisher swine over fifty-five pounds is the animal unit equivalent of point four animal units per head.
Okay.
So, nine sixty.
So it's, it's a fifty-five pound animal or, or?
Over.
Over?
Over, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for David? Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your address.
Richard Funky, forty-eight two forty-nine, two sixty-seventh street, Brandon, South Dakota. I was, we left the last meeting or deferred it and I had, I felt two things that I needed to take care of the concerns and one was water. I spoke with Minnehaw County Water twice, once earlier this month and today also. They feel that water is a concern up in that area and they are going to address it. They have not held their board meeting, which is tomorrow. He could not give me approval that they would have the new pumping system that they're gonna have to put in to supply the water, because it's not just a concern of me being there, it's a concern of all the neighbors and everybody. There is a shortage of water up there. They need to address it and he felt that they would approve it tomorrow, but he could not give me that assurance. If the water isn't approved, I would not be able to get onto rural water. If I didn't get water, I wouldn't need a permit. But I did talk to Dick Hammond with Heine Electric and Irrigation and he would drill, drill some test wells, he said, in that area with the aquifer and the rock system. He felt there's plenty of water in that area for, to have a well if I needed to. So either way, I think I can satisfy the water needs that would be required of, a unit this size would take twenty-four hundred gallons a day, which isn't a huge amount. But I don't know how many homes that would be, but the normal well can supply that. The other issue was with Springwater Township and we've met with them and I will work with them as far as getting, taking care of maintenance of the road if there's issues above and beyond normal maintenance. And so we'll be meeting with them at their next township meeting and getting an agreement on that, that would be attached to the permit. And also with the driveway issue, they wanna be, they wanna, I have to have a driveway permit so that it's located correctly and done properly and I'm willing to do that also and that would also be tied to the permit. So I feel I've met the objections to the prior meeting and so I'd like to see this get approved, so that we don't miss the opportunity to get the building built later this summer. Any questions?
Mister, no further questions for Dick? Scott?
I was gonna give you this. The, we did receive a complaint via email and I'm gonna hand out, here's the, I gave one to the applicant, I'll give one to you guys as well. Just a letter of concern.
And full disclosure, he, this fellow called me and I asked him to follow up with any suggestions he might have. No. And if I may, I would also say that I was going to check out Highway one oh three going north from Sherman and so since I was driving up that way, I drove by this location and continuing north, apparently the bridge is out just south of Sherman and I had to jog back over. I drove all the way up to the Moody County Dairy up there. One oh three is a pretty narrow paved road.
Since there is no further questions for Richard, I think you can sit down. You might, we might call you back up if something arises.
Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Stan Williamson, Rock County Commissioner, District Two. And I guess the road agreement will come about at the next township meeting with spring water, I take it. See, this is a unique permit you have before you. I don't know if you've ever addressed one of these before on the state line, have you?
We've had other things on the Iowa state line, but no, I don't think I recall another one on the Minnesota state line.
And for tonight and for in the future, it, you know, it's hard for Rock County and Minnehaw County to come to an agreement on setbacks. I understand that. I'm here kinda, kinda representing Rock County and our Rock County resident Gary Hanson, who is in that farmland place to the north and a little bit east. I believe he's at nineteen hundred some feet, I believe. Rock County setbacks are a half mile. And we are a very, very livestock friendly county and we get by with, we do a lot of half mile setbacks. I guess all in all, if this would happen, if this would be a reversal and a Minnesota resident was putting a hog barn on the state line and you have a resident across the road, which there are no rules, there's no statute, there's no ordinances to stop that. Common courtesy would be to, for Minnesota, Rock County, would be to address that issue. And of course, all boards changed, change, all, all boards changed, but, but the board we have today in Rock County, we've had some discussion that common courtesy would be that we would ask that producer to move that barn a half mile away from a South Dakota resident. So with that, I guess I'd ask you to push that barn. If you do allow this permit, push that barn twenty-six hundred and forty feet away from Gary Hanson's residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last month we did hear a certain amount of opposition. Is there anyone in the crowd that would like to speak? Please state your name, your address.
Carl Leester, four eight seven three seven, two hundred and fifty-third street, Garrettson. I spoke at the last meeting as well. There's a few things that I, I don't know if were, were addressed or not that I had mentioned. First and foremost, I'm concerned about the, the safety, the increased truck traffic that's gonna be coming by there, past my home, through the city of Garrettson, past the city of Garrettson, with a number of, of children and walkers we have around there because of the narrowness of the, the highways in that location. I'm just really, really concerned about the, the, the safety that. I don't know if any studies have been done concerning how many more trucks and how much more traffic there will be due this, due to this facility. Another thing I had mentioned, if this facility is constructed, the dead animal disposal area currently is, is right next to that intermittent stream. I didn't know if that particular structure had to meet the setbacks required or not. I hadn't heard anything condition that that had to be moved. The other, other thing that was just mentioned, if there's a well there, he said there's a fairly shallow, shallow aquifer. I would be concerned having a facility like that over the top of a shallow aquifer. I know the state has requirements if, to go through the, the state DNR process for, for determining the, the depth of the aquifer and conditions for that. I know this, this size facility doesn't require state approval unless it's recommended by the, the commission. I think that if this does go through, I would recommend having a, an assessment by the, the state DNR as well. Another thing I had was issues with the, the odor. I'm approximately three quarters of mile from the, the project site. The applicant stated in his application on page fifty-eight of it, he had a statement from a faculty member at SDSU, Dr. Aaron Cordis. At the end of that statement, it says it can't account for, for everything, the topography and site, site specific features like that, but it does provide a starting point for investigating the impacts odor can have on the surrounding facility and areas. So if that's the starting point, then I guess I would like to know what additional measures are going to be made as far as determining the, the odor issues, the, how far away that that odor will be an issue. That odor issue, there's a, there's a South Dakota odor footprint tool that was used for that. If you look on the South Dakota State website, there's a text document on that. It states, to address the concerns between production facilities and community residences, just setback distances through, were established through local zoning and state regulatory procedures. Unfortunately, very few of these setbacks requirements have scientific basis because the science did not exist at that time and decisions by local officials were based on emotions. So I don't know if this tool has been used and when those, those setbacks were determined, what determined them? If the, the people on the commission at the time just thought it was a good idea to put them back that far, or if there is any scientific value to the, the setbacks that are in place. Another thing I, I'm concerned about is, is property values. They mentioned that with the, the wind, or the, the cell towers a few minutes ago. I, I did some research online as well, found some, some documentation mostly in Iowa. I did not find one specifically for South Dakota, but quite a bit of research has been done in Iowa because they're, that was kinda where the boom started with these, these commercial facilities. And the documents I saw online, I don't have any of them with me, the, the specific websites, but so there was anywhere from a, from a six to a fifty percent decrease in, in property values. So I would be, be concerned about that as I'm, like I said, only three quarters of mile from the site. Another thing with, the, the property values, back to that, the odor problems, in that document from, from South Dakota State University, it says that the topographic features were not determined during very stable meteorological conditions with cooling temperatures, odorous air may travel long distances along low lying areas. You go straight south from that, that site, you get into that low lying area and that goes straight west to the, the city of Garrettson into the parks. You know, when it says long distances, it doesn't specify what a long distance is. I would think a couple miles is not a very long distance to me. Says significantly more effort is required to conduct a site specific odor evaluation, which would include topographic features. So I guess I would, would suggest that if this is to be constructed, that an, an additional study be done on the, on the, the effect of the odors to the area. Basically from what I read from those, those odors, it, it sounds like there's, you know, a lot, a lot of research been conducted lately on things. They're still working on it, but it basically, to me, it sounds like you really don't know what the odor's gonna be a half mile from it. They're, they're giving it a little bit of scientific research and giving it their best guess. Once this facility is built, if it is constructed, I don't know what the odor's gonna be like at my residence. It could be fine, it could be unbearable. I don't know if there's any, if it is unbearable to me, I don't know if there's any recourse once the, the facility is built. I guess I would, guess I would err on the side of caution and honor the, the Minnesota setbacks, be a good neighbor to them. The city of Garrettson's close by, they have concerns. I guess I would err on the side of caution. Like I said, once this has been, been built, it's hard to, to back off on it. And I guess I would, I would recommend not approving this.
Sir, before you go, where's your house on the map here? Can you show us?
It's not on, it's just off the map. I am
Down that way?
On the highway about at that location.
Oh, you're on the blacktop down there?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Anyone else like to speak?
I live right next to Carl. I'm Helen Williamson, four eight seven one six, two hundred and fifty-third, third street. I'm right next to him. To address the smell thing, this was just in the Argus leader two weeks ago. This is a lawsuit against Smithfield Foods. There's five hundred neighbors there that for decades have suffered headaches, sinus problems, intense putrid smells. This was in your Argus leader. This was just in there a couple of weeks ago. Where he lives, everybody keeps saying this is a sparsely populated area. There are ten acreages from, from his house to my, from mine and right into town. There's about a mile and a half there. This is my taxes that are due next week. There are three thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Those houses along that road are all comparable to that. That's about thirty thousand dollars worth of frickin' taxes that we're paying. Now I think we deserve as much consideration. I seriously do and I, I'm all respect. I'm very shaky 'cause I've hardly slept in the last two months since this started. I wake up all the time over this. This has upset me beyond belief because I, I am a widow. This is my, what I have for retirement. Listen to what the property value has done. You know good and well, even if I tried to sell it, what's gonna happen now? There is gonna be very little left of this now, just because you're gonna bring this in. You're going to, you're supporting one person that is going to lease this out to a corporation. This is not a family farm, regardless of how many times they keep on telling me this. This is not a family farm. The hogs are owned by somebody else. Sunterra Farms, take and look it up. It's a huge corporation. This is not some small family farm. I grew up on a family farm. We all know what the difference is, whether you wanna admit it or not. You know, once you get up above that many thousand head, you got a lot of cattle and you got a lot of hogs. The neighborhood that we live in right now is safe. We don't have any problems with the people that are there. There's a lot of truck traffic passed there already. This is going to more than double it. That road down there, I don't know how they're gonna sustain that on that road right now and if they go to twenty-three, it won't be any better because the road is already broke up in there. There's not enough money to fix those roads. They're, they're at the end of the counties. Nobody cares about them out in there. And on top of that, if you wanna look, I'm on a FEMA flood plane. I have to pay flood insurance on the house that I live in. If you don't think that that stream or that there's a slope to that hill, FEMA requires me to pay flood insurance on my home. I, I don't see that this is a perfect spot. This man does, he owns other land. It's, sure it's his business and it's his, it's his right. We've lived there twenty-five years. Most of these people all have too. We're, we're simply asking for consideration. There's four new homes gonna be built right north of that. That is not, not, not the two that, that are shown on these pictures or anything like that, because there's one up, the one- there's one up, the one that's right north on Quam's place, they got a few head of cattle. Where Bronz lived, they got a few had Jewelson's, everyone's well aware that they have cattle up there. But there's going to be a new home built right on that place, too. There's one right down the road that's already being built. That house is somewhere between three hundred and fifteen, four hundred thousand dollars. That's within a mile of this. There's going to be one right across the road from that, and there's another one that they're planning on building next year. It's not that sparse. Everyone keeps saying, oh, it's out in the middle of nowhere. Take a look at how many homes and things that you're affecting here. You're close to the parks. Garrettson always says they are the city of parks. They pride themselves on having tourism, they have people there all the time. There are certainly better places to put this than here. We all know what the hog barns bring, and we all know that, oh, we don't want to hear about the smell or anything like that. But you know as well as I do what that's going to do to a town that, that's what they support. Brandon is branching out every day. They get further out into the country. The next place that'll be moving into more people will be Garrettson. If you can't build, you cannot build more homes around a hog barn. Those eligibility's that are on that property probably will never get used if he builds that. There's your tax revenue. Like I said, in that little short mile, there's ten acreages. That's not counting the farms. That's just the houses along that road there. Add up the money that's there for the revenue. And like I said, here's my dang taxes, thirty-two hundred bucks. And then get a hog barn in my backyard? I'm sorry, I haven't slept, so I am very shaky. We, please ask for your consideration for the amount of money that we pay in taxes that is living along that road there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gary Hanson, one one two one hundred and seventy-first Street, Jasper. I'm the closest there in Minnesota. Everybody has said that we need to go by the Rock County. I believe that should be in gentleman's agreement, I believe they call it, go by ours. Everybody will be happy. I'm not happy that the building's going there, but if it was pushed back to a half a mile, that's the best we can do. As far as the water, Helen has her own well, I have my own well. When I moved on to that place, the person that was there before me had a considerable amount of hogs. And he basically moved off that place because he could not get enough water without drilling and drilling and drilling deeper. Since then, and I have a half a dozen animals, a couple cows, not a lot, but I had to put in a supply tank so that well of mine could keep up already, which it works, but nobody else is drawing twenty-four hundred gallons a day right across the street. I guess that's my main issues now, would be that. Garrettson is a small community. The small communities in South Dakota are having troubles making it, making anything. I don't believe this is going to bring anything to the community of Garrettson. And my other concern is if this building does go in, how many more buildings can go on this site? That's my question to you. How many more buildings can be built there? When I drive around, I don't hardly ever see one hog building by itself. And if it is, it's not there very long. There's another one and another one. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Greg Franca, nine one two Dallas Street, Garrettson. Helen and Carl all made some real good points. I guess one thing I'd like to say is Garrettson bills itself as a city of parks, and right there, almost where that little pointer, little subject property arrow thing is at, if that's where that hog barn goes, from the northeast corner of that section to that bottom right there where that creek runs through, there's a thirty-five foot drop, according to my GPS. That kind of a drop isn't going to take a whole awful lot of rain to make whatever's on the top of that hill washed out. Now, even if those dead animals are in fenced-off spot or whatever, so you can't see them, that ain't going to stop them from getting wet and the crap rolling downhill. As far as nutrient management goes, there is no way that one hundred percent of those nutrients are used from year to year. It's leaching into the soil, it's leaching into the water through the soil, besides the stuff that's going to run down the hill. I mean, you've got the pit underneath, it's supposed to be contained, it goes into a tank, but how does it get from the pit into the tank? There's connections in between there. Stuff gets slopped, it's the way it works. It's just the way it is. There've been several studies, I don't have with me, if you want, I have them at home. I have the website addresses and that, that North Carolina and Tennessee right now have some documented cases where the smell and the particulates from confined operations have actually been, been making people sick. They've actually documented it, they've got proof of it. Right now, on the twenty eighteen Iowa legislative ticket, they have fifteen bills to consider that are all strictly related to operations. They're finding out that, you know, I worked on, I worked for a railroad, spent about three quarters of my natural life in the northwest corner of Iowa. And when they started, you know, building all the confinements, one thing, you could smell it as soon as you started getting down into that part of the country. But now, here twenty years later, what they're finding out is that the nutrients that I just talked about are leaching into the groundwater, Des Moines in twenty fifteen spent a million and a half dollars on nitrate removal. Like I said, I'm not Mr. Greenpeace or anything like that there, but this isn't a good spot for this thing. It's just, it's not. It's the water, and water is really important to Garrettson. Right where it comes into town, in the Devil's Gulch, goes under, I don't know if you've ever been up there, but there's a little, we'll call it the Crappy Bridge, and just right around the corner, there's a boat landing, and that's where all the kids swim in the summertime and stuff like that. This is within two miles, a mile and a half, two miles of this. I guess that's the points I'd like to make. Questions?
Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
You can come forward, and after you're done, I'm going to close the floor.
I have another question. If this opens up, since we've, all of us that are sitting here know what the dairy has for employment, we're concerned about who else would be employed since this is a, this outfit is from Canada, who would actually be working there? We know how many migrants there are north of us, and we're just a little concerned about safety in this community. I mean, do we need to call in motor carrier enforcement, the state highway patrol, or anything, once this opens up? We have children in this neighborhood, you know, everybody says it sparsely, but these people walk there. We're concerned about who's here. Like I said, these neighbors all know each other, we've all lived around each other for years, and this is someone that is twenty miles away. Who's going to go up and watch that? He's going to expect our local volunteer fire department in case there's a fire, and don't tell me that doesn't happen around here, because it's, there was one not too long ago in a hog barn. Or our local volunteer ambulance, none of these people are paid, and they're the ones that'll have to go up there and address the situation if there's anything happens up in there. He doesn't live here, but he's going to expect our volunteers in our community to rally around and help him out, because that's what we do. We help our neighbors. But like I said, this guy doesn't live in our community, and so far, you can see there's a few of them that aren't here tonight, and it's for a darn good reason, because they've been intimidated not to be. Thank you.
Will the petitioner come forward, please? Mr. Funky? Will you come to the podium, please? Were there any questions that were raised that you could answer?
Well, concerning the employment, I'd like to bring Mr. Dave Coburn up here, who is going to be managing this farming, and he's a Corson resident, just north of Corson. So, Dave?
Hi, my name is Dave Coburn. I have a hog farm just north of Corson, three miles, been there for thirty years, don't have a neighbor one that hollers at me about smell, but I'm also senior swine specialist for Central Farmers Co-op. First of all, I can appreciate some concerns they have, but technically, A, one, Sunterra is working with companies to develop South Dakota as long as we meet your setbacks. Okay? That's one. Two is that there will be no other facilities, swine facilities, on that property. Why? Because Sunterra will not put more than one hog facility within a mile of another hog facility, so he will never have another hog facility on that place. As far as trucking goes and the nuisance and all that, number one, there won't be more than, everything is done by semis, be one semi in there once a week for feed, and at the end of a hundred and fifty-day period, there'll be four semis to take the pigs out, one semi, two semis to bring them in. So the trucking is not that great. As far as management and labor, we have our own people here. I have three employees that work with me, we'd work with Dick, with Sunterra on the property and go. This facility is naturally vented. It's fifty-one by three hundred and ninety-two feet, curtains on both sides. The north side of the curtain is insulated, the south side is non-insulated. The curtains are all on computers, and the air value in there is constantly moving through that barn. So the fumes are not concentrated, they're released. As far as the nutrient management, this is all better than fertilizer any day in the week. Okay? It's natural, all right? In the pit, okay, in the pit, we treat the pit with a chemicals that's biodegradable, that increases the microbial activity of the bacteria to break down the manure in the pit before it goes into the ground. Okay? That also leaches out methane gas at volume levels that expel it through it, so you're not going to smell it, it's not going to be a stinking mess. Sunterra also will be seeing this facility once a week. It's got to be clean, it's got to be squared away, and it's professionally managed and professionally run. It's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar facility. There'll be approximately two to three employees, either part-time or full-time there. The feed volume, you're talking about two thousand tons of feed per year in this facility. If you multiply that by thirty-five bushels of grain, you're going to see the grain market go up as these facilities move out in South Dakota. Are there issues from these folks here? Yes, but if the setbacks are made, and we are going to be good stewards, both Central Farmers and Sunterra, in managing these farms and buildings within South Dakota. A lot of the farmers we work with don't have the capitalization to drop seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a facility. You can appreciate that, Doug, with these markets. Okay? So we network together to bring companies in to build the economic growth of South Dakota. Are there issues? And I respectfully say yes. But as long as we meet the setbacks, these facilities will be professionally managed. The facility is as modern as you can get it, computerized. The help are well-trained, well-groomed. And no, we don't need to bring a van out to bring them in. At least, my wife hasn't put me in a van yet, but be there as it may. But we have lots of them. If you go down to Parkston, in that area, there's a hundred of them. And they're right in town, right out of town. And the same thing in Iowa. But we've started building these things, Dick wants to use it for the manure, manure value, which would handle, this barn would handle approximately a hundred and sixty acres of fertilizer, without using, without using your commercial fertilizers, which your nitrates inherit. This is, this manure value, this manure is biodegradable, it's natural. There's no chemicals in it. Is there any questions from you folks?
Jeff?
Why do you always call on me?
Because you always kind of shake your head like you want to speak.
Have you guys given any consideration to mulching the deceased animals? I know that there's a technology out there.
There's a thing here. First of all, when you go into deals like this, and this can be part of his thing, we can put containers in like I have at my farm, and I use a rendering facility, and those pigs are picked up, the minute you call them, they're there the next day.
Okay. I just wondered if you'd given any consideration.
They are not, excuse me, let's be clear about this. There's no fence out here with pigs this high dead. Those pigs will be put in a container, and the rendering company will pick them up the next day. And in twenty-four hours, the rendering company's there.
They require that. They do not want animals that are half-decomposed before they come and get them, so.
And you don't want the disease either, so.
No. Road and control, road and control around the building is a must. The grasses have got to be kept. Dick can also work with the folks here on water by putting a cistern in under the office portion that comes in, where the water can come in and trickle, and that's what I have in my farm. Okay? And so that issue is mute. I mean, a shallow aquifer, you can put it on a trickle thing and it just comes in and goes out, okay? So we work with it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Jeff.
Mr. Funky, would you consider locating the building itself a little further away from the Minnesota line?
Well, it's a little bit. I mean, you know, past the driveway and more farm ground being taken up, I'd have to look at that, so I'd rather, you know, the site has met all the setbacks, and that's where I worked with planning and zoning as to the right location for it. I have talked to Jewelson's and Quam's and some of those folks up there, and they told me, you know, they got wells and they have adequate water for their cattle, but we all prefer rural water, so rural water is the option we want to use, and we feel that's going to happen.
Are they going to have to bury a pipe to your property, then?
That would be at my expense.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to close the floor. Any discussion, thanks, Dick. Any discussion commissioners?
Madam Chair, I think that a lot of interesting points were brought up. I know that nitrates are an issue in Iowa and Minnesota, and I know that on the Big Sioux River, the greatest inputs of nitrates are the city of Watertown and the city of Sioux Falls. The East Dakota Water District monitors nitrates all the way down till it goes into the Missouri. I think that whether or not this building is built, nutrient management is clearly important, and the fact that manure is going to be brought here and there to encourage agricultural production is going to happen no matter where the building is. The building itself is not going to discharge itself into the environment. North Carolina, they built those things in the forties and fifties, and technology has changed. None of us are driving the same car that grandpa used, and none of us are using the same telephone that mom and dad used. Technology has changed, and these modern operations, I believe, are a great improvement. And our ordinance did use, in fact, the odor pattern that was studied and accepted by South Dakota State University. We didn't just pick a number out of a hat. As a matter of fact, when we were contemplating the idea of seven million chickens, which almost went to Turner County, would have required, what was it, a twenty-two mile setback? Yeah, when are you going to find a twenty-two mile setback? It's not possible. Anyway, I think that while I would like us to see if we can work with our friends in Minnesota to set it back a little further, maybe not a whole half-mile, I think that there's good reason to approve this, and I don't think that it's going to be the problem that the neighbors are afraid of. And, you know, if you can't see it, can't smell it, and it's not hurting the water, hopefully, it's not as objectionable as you thought. Anyway, anybody else want to say something?
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, I'm in favor of this. It's, it's always a fear factor out there. Mrs. Williamson, I know you just said if somebody built a new house on a flood plain, well, you can sit, you say, oh, that's going to devalue it by building it in that particular spot. To me, you know, you build things, you build things. It's not going to be as bad as what you think. The predominant winds are always out in the summertime when you're outside, they're from the south, so you're not going to have a problem with that. You know, I remember a few years ago, it's probably twenty, maybe not quite that long ago, there's a big concern that there are two hog houses going to come up south of Palisades Park. Did that ruin Palisades Park?
Have you been down there in the summertime?
Yes, I, I do go up there quite a bit.
Madam Chair, we're not going to.
No discussion any longer.
Thank you.
And then another factor is the smell. You know, driving up to Garrettson, what's the first thing you see when you're coming to Garrettson from the, from the south? The ponds. Isn't that a concern? Shouldn't Brandon really be a concern, what if a natural disaster came and those opened up? Brandon's in a predicament too, you know. What if they don't get water? That'll stop the growth of Brandon. I'm all in favor of this. Dick did a lot of work and put into it, he's did a lot of thinking. He just didn't do this on a whim. You know, science today is, you know, people can't believe it. We don't want to raise livestock like we used to back in the fifties, sixties, like our grandparents did. That's when pollution really trickled into the ponds and the intermittent streams. So, I have no problem with this whatsoever.
Anyone else?
I was just going to agree with, was it Mr. Colburn back there? I agree with him putting, for odor control, there's better ways to break down the odor. Put it in a manure pit like that, there's chemicals in there that'll break it down to help reduce the odor. And I can see Mr. Hanson's opposition to being the setback on it. I guess that's kind of riding a little hung up, I guess it'll be the setback on there to kind of go with them. But I am in favor of it, but I just, I kind of like to work with him maybe a little bit too, and see if we can get that back, I guess.
Anyone else?
I kind of echo what they had to say. I'm supportive of it. I, I would like to see us, I don't know if there's something we can do to work more closely with our Minnesota neighbors who have a further setback. We're talking about seven hundred feet, and maybe it wouldn't need to be the entire seven hundred and forty feet, but if there's some way we can try and make accommodations for, for our Minnesota neighbors and deal in good faith.
Anyone else? Mike, any comment?
Well, you know, I am a proponent of this, and thinking about the setback with Minnesota, even if this property, this building was pushed to the far west side of the property, at face value, doesn't appear that we'd meet that half-mile setback. Can you confirm or deny that? I guess my question, or my point of working with that is, or bringing that point up, I guess, is to go three-quarters of the way, I don't know that we're gaining anything, I know we're trying to be stewards of Minnesota, and I can appreciate that, I'd hope that, you know, if it had the, if the tables returned, that, you know, we'd be looking for the same outcome. But, if we're not gaining that full setback that Minnesota would ask for by putting this building even on the far west side, what is in that gain if, at the expense of doing so? Like Dick pointed out, we're incurring costs for the driveway or the loss of farm ground. So, as difficult as it is, I guess, I do understand why he put it where he put it.
Any motion?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions as stated, but I would like to ask Mr. Funky to consider working with planning and zoning on perhaps locating the building a little bit further to the west, and doesn't necessarily have to go to the full half-mile, but just in good faith to try to be friendly.
Do you want to add that as a condition?
Nope, I'm just saying as, ask in good faith. Hope to get a second.
I'll second the motion.
So, Madam Chairman, I need to discuss a little bit about the whole idea of shifting site plans around. I think you may recall that we've had, we've had our state's attorney pretty much indicate that when we approve these site plans, they need to be consistent, and we, we're not allowed to really vary them to move buildings around. That would have to come back as a conditional use permit amendment. So, it's, I'm hesitant about saying, approving a permit and then saying, we're going to change the site plan. So, I'm just telling you that.
Does the state's attorney want to have a say anything?
I would concur with the sentiments that were expressed by the Director of Planning and Zoning.
So, you don't think we can suggest it?
You have a conditional use permit application before you, and you can either approve it, deny it, or make your amendment on the floor.
If I might, though, we don't have a building permit request yet. So, if the building permit came in and it was in a slightly different spot, is that a whole new request?
If I may, can I read condition number five?
Sure.
For clarification for the audience, David Heinold. Condition number five states that the facility shall conform to the submitted site plan. Any minor changes may be approved by the staff of the Minnella County Planning Department. Major changes will require an amendment to this permit in a public hearing.
What's major change?
Site moving the building.
Oh, not changing the color of the paint on it? So.
Any further discussion?
Straight west, it looks to me like then it's closer to the city of Garrettson.
So, I'll, I'll withdraw that suggestion and just make a motion to approve it as submitted. And is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded to approve the conditional use permit, eighteen-ten, for Richard Funky, and it's one point seven miles northeast of Garrettson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Move on to number nine.
Commission, David Heinold, Minnella County Planning Department. Item number eight, conditional use permit eighteen dash fifteen, is a request to allow a Class B beef concentrate animal feeding operation. It's a request for one thousand five hundred animal units. The property is owned by Jared Quested. The property itself, as you can see, is located outlined in red. This property is about three, about three and a half miles southwest of the city of Baltic. As you can see, that there's an existing tree belt here, there's a residence on this property. The site of the proposed building, which would be approximately three hundred and thirty-two by fifty feet, will house an additional four hundred and fifty head of finishing cattle. The site itself has, has a few barns on the site, as this is, this is a deferral from, from the, also a deferral from the March Planning Commission meeting, should mention that, to allow the property owner to work with the, work within the setbacks for residential dwellings in the immediate vicinity. Should go back to this first, the two residential dwellings that are with, located within the minimum separation setback are this property right here, and this property to the northwest of the site, both touching that red boundary. Moving back into the existing capacity, just not dwelling on that too much, but the existing cattle barns, there's an open lot located right here, and there's a tree line on the north side of that. And then there's an existing barn, as you can see there, in the white. This shows that cattle yard right there, just south of the trees in the background. And this shows that barn, there's also a cattle yard that's located to the north of that barn. And this shows the applicant's proposal for an expansion, the proposed expansion for the cattle yards. With, you can barely see it, but the building kind of outlined in black there along, this is a tree or a fence line, and there is a creek that runs, or intermittent stream that runs along this area right here. So, the applicant has, and getting back to the, the reason for the deferral, not going into the details, but the applicant has, has put together a landscape plan, which has been provided in your packets. The landscape plan shows a row of shelter belt trees along here, which, as you can see, there are five different rows of trees that are located in that area to the east of what would be that, the existing and the proposed barn area, as you can see right there, and that goes all the way down to, there's that existing tree belt that's located just to the north of that existing cattle yard right here. As you can see in this image, this is that existing barn with the cattle inside it, with the pen area there. This is that existing cattle yard to the north of the building. This is looking from the, the west side of the barn, as you can see the slope of the barn. Again, this is the same cattle yard north of the building, existing building. And, yeah, looking back at the building there, the slope of the barn. And this is looking at the site of where that proposed building would sit, and you can see the trees there. This drops off towards that intermittent stream, which meets all of the environmental setback criteria of at least a hundred feet away from the site. The applicant has indicated in the application, this is a picture of where dead animal, the applicant's plan for, the dead animal disposal plan in managing any rendering service there.
David, so what are they going to do at that location? Just looks pretty.
Rendering, pickup of dead cattle.
There'll be a pad or something there, it's not just throw them in the bushes, right?
The applicant can clarify on that.
Okay.
I'll defer. The applicant has stated a plan for dead animal, dead animal disposal plan, and you can ask them any questions that you may have. This is looking north on the gravel road, or, excuse me, south on the gravel road. This shelter belt here, there, that's where, see, there's a telephone pole there. The house is on the other side of the tree belt there. And that's one of the properties within the three-eighths of a mile setback. This is looking north on that gravel road, you can see it's pretty wide open. This is looking, so if you go north, or about a quarter mile to the north, this is that road looking down the stream. Right down the middle, you can kind of see the barn in the background there. And this is that property to the northwest, this is looking up from the creek area. There's an existing row of evergreen trees, the, quite a significant row of evergreen trees around that property. There's the barn again, this is looking from that intersection back towards the southwest, toward, straight towards the white barn. And this is looking from the, the east of the site, as you can see, the cattle yard and the barn. The applicant, that landscape plan showed that the trees would be located roughly along this area here. And this is, I'm just looking at the, that site again, from that perspective, from the, what would be the, that property owner to the southeast, the residential dwelling. This is the, that site of the property owner to the southeast. See the house off in the distance. So, just going through, just going through really quickly as far as the criteria, since the, the proposed, since the landscape plan has been submitted, the, so that reduces the setback, minimum setback distance from, or, in half. So, one of the properties to southeast would still fall within that setback distance because of how, how close it is. Back up, property to the northwest would still fall within that setback distance. Yeah, excuse me, because the, the property to the northwest is seventeen hundred feet away, and the property to the southeast is twelve hundred feet away. So, the reduction to the southeast for the landscape plan would cut that in half, which takes that out of the minimum separation criteria. So, only that property would be, that property would be taken out. Conditional use permit criteria, one, that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for the use is already permitted and upon property values within the surrounding area. The, the property itself is located in an agricultural area, there are a few residential acreages in the immediate vicinity. The site itself sits on about six and a half acres of land. You have the two dwellings, but the landscape plan has been submitted to reduce those setbacks in half, taking one of those properties out. Two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The expansion of this operation produced little impact, little effect on the surrounding agricultural production lands. It can provide potential benefit for surrounding areas. Property can be used for organic fertilizer. The, the proposal results in existing, or expansion of an existing facility, which can present concern for property owners in the immediate vicinity that may have building eligibility's that would be entirely dependent upon the decision-making process of the planning commission. Three, the utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. This proposed location for the expansion of an existing cattle operation is located a little over a half-mile from the county highway. And the applicant plans to extend rural water and other facilities to the site. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The property sits on six and a half acres, so there should be enough parking to accommodate the, the use, the proposed use for the expansion. No parking is allowed in the right-of-way at any time. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so none of these will constitute a nuisance. Since this is in, the existing capacity has five hundred animal units, through the proposed expansion, there are possibilities for certain nuisances such as odor, dust from traffic, from workers that are coming to and from the site on the roads. The applicant has provided a plan for controlling the odor management analysis for the proposed use. Despite the, the low density of dwelling units in the area, as there are two existing dwellings, the planting of shelter belts will significantly help odor control, and considerations shall be given to other odor control alternatives. However, it is recognized that in no case that odor can be completely eliminated. Six, that health, safety, general welfare of the public and comprehensive plan. The proposed expansion of an existing cattle feedlot will unlikely cause a significant increase to the public health, safety, and welfare concerns because of that low density of dwelling units in the immediate vicinity. The conditions on this permit and the zoning ordinance regulations allow for development of intensive agricultural uses without much potential harms that a facility like this may create. This subject property is firmly located within agricultural production areas defined by the Division twenty-three-five Comprehensive Plan, which Goal Three states that the sole purpose of this planning category is Which goal three states that the, the sole purpose of this planning category is protect, preserve and promote agricultural uses and economic viability of farming operations. Given this step is to allow community feedback through the planning commission for intensive agricultural uses to mitigate any potential concerns in the rural area. So, staff finds that the proposed use for a class B beef cattle concentrated animal feeding operation is a, is consistent with the goals and actions of the envision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen dash fifteen with eight conditions and I can read them if, if you have any questions on those. But I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for David?
Just so I have it straight, I think I pretty much know it. What is an animal unit on beef cattle?
One.
One, okay, that's what I thought.
Any other questions?
And just so I'm also clear, we don't have waivers, but the plan then is the tree planting in lieu of the waivers?
Correct, we do not have waivers, but the reduction of that three eighths of a mile is cut in half with the landscape plan.
Anyone else? Is the petitioner here? Will you come forward, state your name and your address, please?
Jared Quested, two five one seven six four seventy-first Avenue Baltic. Guess a couple of things I'll just touch on, that you had questions on the rendering area. So, as of right now, we do just have a spot there that the trucks come in and pick them up. Once we can pour some concrete, we plan on doing a little pad there and then setting up a barrier around it. To, I guess alleviate the, the visual sight, sight of it, I guess. So, so that'll kind of take care of that, if that answers your question. Then the other part I wanted to clarify on for Becky, the, uh, the setback. David was talking about the southeast place, which he had a photo up. They do fall within yet, even though we did the tree planting plan, I believe. I mean, he can clarify that if I'm wrong, but I thought so. So, so that place is still within, but it's within a couple of feet. And, and when we do expand, I plan on removing the nearest yard probably to them. I can't say that for sure, but that's probably likely the goal. So that way we can move cattle further away from them and, and that should kind of alleviate all those problems together. And then that's why we did the tree plan too, on that side, since they seemed more irritated or noticed, or didn't want the change, I guess, so that's why we did it on that side. Any other questions?
Did you talk to those neighbors, were they for or against?
Uh, so, the neighbor to the northwest did not want to openly oppose it. You know, they, they said, well, we're not really against agriculture or anything, but we don't want to sign the waiver. I guess, just to be honest, that they said they're worried about property values. I guess to me agriculture adds a lot of value to property from the manure, so it's kind of a different way to look at it. But, so, so they were not really opposed. The other side didn't really give me the opportunity to really discuss the plan with them. You know, I wanted to sit down with them and explain what we're doing and then we had to do the tree plan, I wanted to discuss that with them and they, they just wouldn't let me try to explain it. So, that's kind of how that ended up.
Any other questions?
This is no question, Jared, but I just want to commend you, it's nice to see a young face up here wanting to expand his livestock operation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Okay, discussion from the commissioners?
Just to, just to clarify, does the tree plant plan alleviate that waiver, or is, where is that sitting?
Just for one of the properties in the, to the northwest?
This property to the southeast still falls, it's twelve hundred feet.
So do we need a waiver for them or not?
So the landscape plan has been submitted as part of the requirement, so there is a reduction setbacks.
So that reduction alleviates?
So it applies to both properties, so, yes.
Any other discussion? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
A motion has been seconded to approve conditional use permit eighteen fifteen, uh, class B beef CAFO, approximately three miles southwest of Baltic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten.
Is a rezoning request eighteen oh three to rezone property from A-one agriculture to C commercial. Uh, the property is located approximately two miles west of Baltic, or basically at the Baltic interchange of I twenty-nine. So, the owner is Performance Property Management and the petitioner is Lance Warren. And this is the parcel, it's a two point three six acre parcel that is being requested to be rezoned. You clearly can see the interstate interchange here. This, this property and this pro- both of these properties are already zoned commercial. And this is a, an expansion of that commercially zoned property. The property is, there is a rather significant hillside here and I'll show you the pictures of that. Our, our envision twenty thirty-five plan, which was recently adopted encourages commercial development at interstate interchanges and high-traffic intersections. And this has also, in the plan, in our envision twenty thirty-five plan, says that we should be developing commercial developments that in a nodal matter and a manner, and I would indicate this would be. This is a paved highway, this is a paved highway and this is a paved highway and then you have the interstate. So, it is, um, what I would say is ideal for future commercial development. The property to the north is all agricultural property. And then there are a number of, of homes, of homes that you can see along the county highway here, which I, uh, which I did note. So, the, the property does meet the criteria of our comprehensive plan. And staff is recommending approval to rezone the two point three six acres from A-one agriculture to C commercial district. I'd be glad to answer any questions, I can show you the pictures here. This is basically, you know, looking at that hillside. This is at the corner of the, uh, of the existing business that's there. And this is looking to, sort of to the southeast. This is the adjacent property. See the gas station there? And then this, you can see the hillside. So, there is, you know, a pretty good si- a pretty good steep hill there. And then this shows the properties, the residential properties that are located to the east along that county highway. I'd be glad to answer any questions and I will remind you that this is a public hearing. So you should open it up for, as a public hearing for the, anyone that wishes to make any comments.
Any further questions for Scott?
Oh, is there a speed limit sign in it? That's, I guess my biggest concern was getting extra traffic on there, you know, it's a pretty busy intersection there.
It is a busy intersection and I-
Would we go forward with that, or the county commission do that?
It would be the highway department, because that's a county highway department and they could make recommendations to the commission. So basically, the county highway department has the authority to bring their concerns to the county commission and then they would set, if they felt it needed a lower speed limit, they would work with the county commission and then it's set by resolution.
And this was just to rezone, once they're ready to put a business there, they will need to come back.
Typically, uh, there are just, there are very few businesses that are permitted uses. Most of the business activity that occurs in the C commercial zoning district requires a conditional use permit. So they would come back with a site plan and there would be further notification that they would need to go through and hearings on that particular request.
Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your name, address.
Lance Warren, uh, four seven one six five two hundred and fifty first Street Baltic. That's the business that I own that is just to the west of the subject property.
Any questions for the petitioner? I guess I have one. Um, I know that Scott said that there's just certain businesses that go there. Have you, is there an activity that you're aware of that somebody might want to do something there?
Our future plan is like probably rental storage units to develop there or so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Madam Chair, no one's speaking against it, I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Okay, a motion has been seconded to approve the rezoning eighteen oh three and rezonate from A-one agricultural district to the C commercial district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, the next item, uh, now item eleven is rezoning request eighteen oh four. This is also to re- rezone a property from A-one agriculture to C commercial. This property is at the Crook's exit of Interstate twenty-nine. And the petitioner is Tim Teheart and generally this is about two and a half miles north of Sioux Falls. The address is two five seven seven three, uh, four seventy-second Avenue. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately one point six seven acres from A-one agriculture to C commercial. You may be familiar with this area. This is an extensive commercial development on the west side of the interstate. A couple of years ago, the applicant rezoned this area to, uh, commercial and has since developed that as storage units. And so, this area right here is also zoned commercial and has been developed as, uh, storage warehousing. So, the, while the applicant is only rezoning about one point seven acres, it is really building on an existing commercial area that's already there. And, once again, uh, just as I said previously, our comprehensive plan sort of wants development to occur at interstate interchanges. And once again, this is on a paved county road and an interstate. So it really fits the criteria of what we'd like to see, where we'd like to see development occur. It fits the criteria of the zoning of the, of our comprehensive plan, the envision twenty thirty-five plan. So, uh, staff's recommending approval. And, uh, once again, this is a public hearing, so, uh, if you, after you have any questions for me, I will, uh, ask you to open it up to the public for their input and we'll have a public hearing. The one thing that I will tell you, uh, that is a little bit different about this property is that there is an existing single-family residence located on this property. And so, uh, once this property is rezoned, that single-family residence will be, will become a lea- a non-conforming use and you may recall. So, that would, that could potentially, uh, if they want to come back and do some kind of amendment or improvements to the property, they may have to, uh, come back for a conditional use permit, like we did last month for the Wallaces at the, uh, Dell Rapids exit. So, but it's more than likely that they will eventually develop this to, into a commercial property, so. And you could also ask the petitioner what his plans are at the house.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Jeff.
Scott, if that home is removed, does it become an eligibility on the property?
No, because the eligibility is now gone. Once the rezoning occurs, there'll be no more eligibility, uh, because it is going to be zoned commercial.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Here? Will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Good evening commissioners, Tim Teheart, two five five two four, four hundred and seventy-second Avenue, renter.
Any question, any questions for the petition- petitioner, sorry?
I would just comment that I've seen him here many times.
I guess I have one. They did say there is a residential, um, house on that. I suppose it's going to stay there indefinitely, or is it at some point, I suppose, could be moved?
Currently, my father is living there, he has expressed wanting to leave pretty soon. When he does leave, we're going to remove the house, probably auction it off, remove it off the property and then continue with self-storage units. I don't have a site plan developed yet, but similar to what we did to the north, kind of continuing that is our plan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this?
That's a relief.
I move a approval of the rezoning of item number eighteen dash zero four from A-one agriculture district to the C commercial district.
Second.
Been made and seconded to rezone eighteen dash oh four from agricultural district to commercial district, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, item number twelve. Uh, is a conditional use permit, number eighteen twenty-one, to allow a class B cattle CAFO of one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine animal units on this property. The property is located approximately three miles northwest, or excuse me, northeast of Hartford along County Highway one hundred and thirty or two hundred and fifty-eighth street. Uh, there is an existing CAFO on the property that holds a thousand head of beef cows. And, uh, this expansion will allow to a class B CAFO to up to one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, uh, cows. Or, or a head, because one cow is worth one animal unit. This facility, as noted, is existing. The petitioner in two thousand and sixteen, uh, did apply for a permit to increase this as an existing CAFO to who the largest it could at that time without a conditional use permit, up to that one thousand animal unit mark. They made several improvements to the property at that time, including, uh, some drainage ways a- and a, uh, catchment basin for, uh, water that runs off to the property. The site plan, he's, the petitioner has submitted several site plans, including the, the primary expansion of the facility will be a barn on the north side of the property. And just to the north of the, the proposed barn, so this lower blue spot is the barn, uh, is in a, uh, tree grove that has been planted and I'll show you a picture of that too. And that barn will hold approximately, uh, seven hundred and fifty, uh, animals in that barn, so the bulk of the expansion. Uh, the site plans are, are detailed and show everything that, uh, the site plan is required to show, including one of the major items is drainage. This particular site plan shows that, uh, outside drainage will flow into these, these, um, diversion channels to flow that the water doesn't go onto the property. And then the other water that's lands on the property flows into catchment basins to settle out any solids and debris and then gets pumped into this pond here. I'll just move on to the next site plan, which will also be a major aspect of the proposal. So, uh, this proposed facility includes primarily, is going to be solid manure that's going to be taken from this property, it's going to be handled in a solid state. And that will be kept in those catchment basins and onsite. But the water that runs off-site is called livestock surplus production water. And that took a little bit of, of research to, to find how our ordinance does address this directly and how, uh, this can be applied, uh, to the, the surrounding area. And that water that rains off and collects- And that water that rains off and collects into this catchment area will then be irrigated into the field just to the south using a center pivot irrigation. This water is defined in our ordinance as being a certain amount of nitrogen. I'd have to look it up exactly. I believe it's one pound of nitrogen per thousand gallons, I believe. And then it requires that the applicant show where it's being spread, which he has here. And then has the separation distances from nearest dwellings, which he meets those. And that the results, or that the water is tested and shown to the, the planning director. So as part of the conditions that I'll get to includes a requirement to test the water on an annual basis. Let's see. So, as the conditional use permit criteria, I'll just run through those here quick. That the site, how is this site affected the use enjoyment of the property in the surrounding area? And the use is already permitted on the property values within the surrounding area. The proposed CAFO is an expansion of an existing site in predominantly agricultural area. There are a couple of single-family dwellings that are located north of the site. I'll go back to my site plan. That are within the setbacks. These properties owners have signed the required waiver in order to reduce the setback. But the site will probably develop as normal as this is an existing facility. And they will not change the, the use of the land. The effect upon normal early development and the improvement of surrounding areas vacant property for use is predominant in the area. As noted, this is an existing site, so the, the surrounding area will likely develop very similarly to what it was in the past. As noted in previous CAFOs, that the manure that's produced on this facility may actually be a benefit to the surrounding agricultural land for uses for manure or as a fertilizer in the surrounding land. Number three, that utilities and access roads, drainage, or other facilities are provided. The facility is already there and the petitioner would extend any current facilities to meet his barn or other confined areas. He has shown the detailed drainage plan to catch the water on the site. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. This parcel is a long ways off the road and that should not be a trouble finding loading, unloading spaces on the property. Number five, that measures taken control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighting signs so that no one of these shall constitute nuisance. The petitioner has, as I noted, received waivers from the nearest properties. He meets the setbacks for the remaining houses. But it is, staff would note that it is the inherent nature that CAFOs do have the potential to create nuisances if not properly managed. So that this petitioner will be required to, or expected to operate the facility as he has stated in his operation plan. And then number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and comprehensive plan. The proposed CAFO will have to comply with conditions of the permit regulations of the zoning ordinance. And the size of it will have to comply with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture, or Department of Environment and Natural Resources requirements as well, just state general permit because of its size. The facility, the proposed CAFO is located within the agricultural production area of the comprehensive plan, which a stated goal is to protect, preserve, promote agricultural uses and economic viability of farming operations. I will go through some of the pictures of the site. So I visited the site and this picture is taken approximately half mile away at the nearest township section line road, looking at the site. And you can see that there's already existing tree groves. And the site is kind of on the other side of a hill. It's kind of in a valley, so to speak. This is the, the tree plantings on the north side of the property that have been started. There's about six or seven rows of trees there. This is the proposed site for the building that will go just south of that tree grove. This is, again, that proposed building site looking north and the trees aren't very tall yet, but I suppose they're, they'll grow. Alright, and this is the, the lagoon, so to speak, that holds that livestock surplus water. When I went there, there was probably two hundred ducks sitting in this lake. And each one of those little specks are, are ducks. So, to show just that that is something that isn't overly contaminated as it is. It's just water, rainwater essentially. So then this is looking towards the facility from that corner of the lagoon. This is probably a better view of it. Kind of looking to the southeast towards where the nearest, there's kind of an intermittent stream here down in the bottom of that. The petitioner does meet the setback requirements for that stream. And you can see at the, one of the catchment basins here that will catch the, the rainwater. And then looking up towards the farmstead and including the, the dwelling that's still in the farmstead. This is looking from the driveway to the nearest houses. You'll see kind of a cluster of housing along the highway there and their existing trees. And then one final picture from the next township road to the east, looking at the farm. You can see again that it's kind of in that valley. It took me a little bit to find a place where I can actually see the facility on the road because there's, the hills block the view of it. So. At that, do you have any questions? Oh, yes, I didn't have, give a recommendation, thank you. Staff finds the proposed facility meets the requirements of the ordinance and goals of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen twenty-one with the following conditions. The facility shall be limited to one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine animal units in size. The, number two, the CAFO shall comply with all applicable regulations of the county zoning ordinance. Number three, the facility shall conform to the submitted site plans. Any minor changes may be approved by the planning director at the Minnea County Planning Department. Major changes will require an amendment to this permit in a public hearing. Number four, the proposed CAFO must obtain a state general permit prior to the facility being populated above one thousand animal units. Number five, the livestock production surplus water must be annually tested for a percentage of solids and amount of nitrogen per one thousand gallons of water. The operator must retain copies of the test results for inspection by the county at any time. Livestock production surplus water must be applied to the land area shown on the submitted map. Land, land application of livestock production surplus water must be done in accordance with a nutrient management plan, which is reviewed by the state general permit. Number seven, the proposed barn shall have engineered certified drawings that shall be submitted for review by the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number eight, a building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. And number nine, the, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the CAFO at any time after proper notice of the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit of conditions of approval in Minnea County zoning ordinance. Now, is there any questions?
Yeah, Kevin, I, these are ticky tacky little things. Right under, in the first paragraph of stat analysis. The end of the second sentence, or yeah, second line there, a thousand beef cows. Should cows be changed to cattle?
Yeah, I had that question, too.
Because cows to me is something that's had a calf and I don't think we're going to have cows with calves in this facility, correct?
Noted.
Okay, so can we change the two cows, or yeah, cows to cattle?
I don't think it's a, the, the conditions doesn't even include that other than animal.
No, but I just saw that and it glared out at me. To me, I'm an old man, middle-aged.
House.
And I should know better, honestly.
The cows to me is the cow that something had, hasn't had a calf, so.
Anyone else have some questions for Kevin?
Kevin, did you consider test wells in the area there? Is that something that should be considered?
It is not located over any sort of mapped aquifer.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if that would be a requirement of state permit. It may be. But if there is something needed, we could.
Okay, thanks. As a petitioner here, will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Tyler Klein, four six 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 one, two hundred and fifty-eighth Street, Hartford, South Dakota.
Any questions for the petitioner?
It's a lot of cattle.
But it is a, sorry, I have a question. It is a family operation though, isn't it? I mean, just not.
I custom feed for some people, but everything's fifty-fifty, pretty much. I own half of them and they own half, just split the rest.
Do you think your system is going to contain the water and the manure properly so that it doesn't just flow down the river, so to speak?
For the amount of work and money we put into it, I hope so. We redid it all in two thousand and sixteen and went through the NRCS and did a hundred percent containment setup with the whole operation. So all the, all the runoff water within the operation goes into the lagoon. All the clean water from the outside fields, road, et cetera, that gets diverted around the place into the nearest stream.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to speak for this item?
Hi, I'm Nana Kane and we own the land across to the north of two five seven seven five four sixty-seventh Avenue. And I just would like to, we're not really opposed to it, but I'd like to know if there's a little more we could do about the odor control. It wasn't really addressed as far as they mentioned prior chemicals to spray on the manure piles because they'll only be hauled out twice a year. And as far as fly control, if there's something we could do to help with that also.
Thank you. Would you like to address that, Mr. Klein?
As far as the fly control, we don't want flies any more than anybody else does. And we got a mister to try to spray down the cattle with insecticide. And we put out fly bait as often as we need to. As far as the smell, the bed pack in the barn will stay in the barn, other than them two times a year. And then it will get hauled out to the fields. Everything that gets scraped up around the bed pack, that will get put into a holding area. And it'll be a pretty big pile, more or less. It won't be a large area of open face manure, I guess, to smell.
Any other questions, Mr. Klein?
Oh, were you going to do anything with the contaminated water? Can you control, or that wastewater? Is there any way?
I want to look into that a little bit more. I talked to my engineer. As far as the lagoon odor, it bothers me a little bit because it's a stale water smell. And I don't know if there's a cost-effective chemical we could put in that water to do whatever the microbial stuff has to do to break it down better. It's going to be addressed if we need to.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else wishes to address this, this particular item? I'm going to close the floor. Any discussion for the commissioners?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the comments of the neighbor. They're talking about flies and odor. And I, I expect that Tyler will, in good faith, continue to work on that issue. And as new technologies come along, you know, maybe someday with GMOs, we'll have cattle and pigs whose crap doesn't smell. But it's not here yet. Anyway, I, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve this project with the conditions stated. That would be for conditional permit eighteen dash twenty-one. And again, ask them to be considered other neighbors.
Thank you. I just want to make it perfectly clear. I know this is a big operation, but I also know that it takes a lot of work to do one of these. I mean, I live in a place where the farmers are all around me, but I'm, I'm still living there. So that's just how it works, but it's always good to, not so much to satisfy your neighbors, but just to be a good neighbor. It works out better that way for everybody. Motion is made in second to approve conditional spread eighteen dash twenty-one to allow a Class B cattle operation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. There is no old business, new business. Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. So, we brought up this, this little side topic to bring into the new business because we've been receiving more questions about a phenomenon called tiny houses. So I just put together about six slides to, to describe how the county deals with tiny houses as of right now. And what we have for thoughts of it. So what is a tiny house? Well, Wikipedia listed as a residential structure under five hundred square feet is generally considered as a tiny house. There's kind of different types of tiny houses, which would be ones that are on wheels or permanent foundations, single-family or multi-house development. People seem to like tiny houses for a few different reasons. And these are some that are listed by the American Tiny House Association, including freedom from debt because they cost less. The freedom from attachment to belongings because you, you can't fill it with a bunch of stuff. And then freedom to pursue a less pressured career because most of these tiny houses are movable, easily to move. And then a simpler life, to be closer with relationships, fewer distractions in a tiny house. Increased ability to travel, and then reduced environmental footprint. A lot of these are addressed with solar panels or composting toilets or very things like that that you see in, in research of that. Our current operations or regulations regarding tiny houses, it kind of depends. Is it a house on wheels? If it is on wheels, we could treat it as a mobile home, which, in which case it could be moved into a mobile home park as it is. Or we could treat it as a, but to treat it, say, as a mobile home, if we were going to put it on a lot, our ordinance does require a twenty-two foot wide minimum for a, a mobile home for a conditional use permit. So a tiny house would not work in any regular lot setting because it does not meet that requirement. Recreational vehicle, we can call a tiny house a recreational vehicle. But it's not for permanent occupancy, it's for recreation. It's for use in campgrounds only and we could put tiny houses in campgrounds. I'm not sure that state parks are very happy about, are very accepting of tiny houses. I never looked into that, if they would look it up or not. And then it must have a current license plate and tags if it's a, or if it's a recreational vehicle. If the tiny house is on a permanent.
Uh, if the tiny house is on a permanent foundation, you could build one. Uh, either site built or modular, so you pour foundation, just move it onto the site. Uh, in this case, it could be a single family dwelling. Uh, some kind of things with that is then then it would have to meet the international residential code as adopted by the county. It would also, uh, but I noted in here, could we use this for accessory dwellings such as like the second dwelling in a farmstead? There isn't the same regulations on second dwellings in a farmstead, so that's a possible location for them. Uh, and then putting it on a permanent foundation defeats a very prominent purpose of a tiny house is that it's mobile. Uh, and so if you can't have to have it on a foundation, can't move it, you can't take it with you to Colorado um or wherever you're gonna move it. Uh, and then the staff concerns about tiny houses. Uh, so the first concern is life and safety. Uh, these houses are, eh, who inspects them? If it's a mobile home, typically HUD inspects them and they have a tag showing that HUD that Housing Urban Development has inspected this and it meets the criteria. Uh, and that that meets the manufactured home construction and safety standards if HUD inspects it. Then if it's a recreational vehicle, it's still, who inspects it? Uh, the recreational vehicle industry association does have standards. They are not um uh law. Uh, there are, eh, to be a park ready, uh, which I believe is what the state campgrounds require. Does require that you meet the standards for recreational vehicles. Uh, so there's that issue too. And then there's wastewater disposal. Uh, so what are you doing? Are you composting the toilets? Are you putting it in a tank and dropping it somewhere else or are you just putting on the site? And then there's uh unusual and or unproven materials. How do you inspect something that, I'll just put on the next slide, is built out of a cargo container? Uh, is that meeting any sort of standards for fire improved needs or insulation uh value for if somebody's gonna freeze to death because their furnace goes out and um there's no insulation? So it's other tiny house concerns is neighborhood compatibilities. Uh, is this a trend or is this something that's gonna be persistent for our long-term future? Uh, and again, the unusual and unproven materials. And then a big limiting factor in Minnea County is that uh pretty much anywhere except for in residential locations or mobile homes, you need a building eligibility. Uh, and building eligibility is are a high-priced commodity in Minnea County. Uh, and typically, if you're gonna be looking to put something small in a lot, you're not gonna wanna pay the extra amount for the building eligibility and the one acre of land that accompanies it. So um, yeah, that's all that I have for that little tiny house presentation.
What does the city of Sioux Falls do?
I guess I didn't really research it uh for this presentation.
Kevin, what brought this up?
Um.
You know? Okay, um, I I have all kinds of questions. Um, I mean, I'm in the business. How do you praise something like that? How are they gonna finance it? What kind of inspections, just like you said? How are they gonna put addresses on them so people know where the hell they are and how they can find them for safety reasons?
Yep.
I mean, it's just, I mean, there's, there's a multitude of things that I'd have to go to school again to try to figure out how to do that. I mean, really.
Eh, in, including in tiny houses, we get a lot of requests for wanting to live in in campers. And that gets uh addressed pretty quickly because our ordinance does directly address campers. Where all these things are brought about by kind of other sections of the ordinance rather than the ordinance itself.
It almost looks like we need three different things. For ones that are mounted permanently, ones that are on wheels, I don't know.
Either that or we just ban them.
Or you, you know, as we noted that uh we aren't banning them, but the bar that if you really want a tiny house, you can build a stick frame tiny house on a foundation on a one acre lot with a septic system. And so you're gonna be paying a hundred thousand dollars or more for this land and.
If I wanna put a tiny house in a tree.
That's the problem is where's the line end?
Yeah.
Storage shed becomes own co-mos.
I did see where they were putting like elderly people in the backyard in a tiny house.
Yeah, that's the other thing is are you gonna be happy if someone suddenly plops one down in your neighborhood and suddenly there's two, two, you know, an aunt and uncle in one house and the grandma and grandpa in another house? And where are you gonna draw the line? And then we're right back to what do they do with the septic?
And how would they assess them? How would they assess them? I mean, I mean, I mean.
It's an utilization issue because they're not paying property taxes.
Exactly.
Or they're not licensing them or.
Yep.
So this has come up because um I've had a county commissioner say it's, you know, they're getting questions about it. So if you want us to draft some kind of ordinance, you should let us know with the research on it. If you just say, oh, forget it, I'll pass that on. I I thought we needed to have a discussion.
I think we need to forget it, but it wouldn't be bad.
I think it raises too many questions.
Backyard, in the back pocket, I mean.
Well, um, I think there's all kinds of problems with it and I I just don't see it. I just don't, the, unless they're gonna, unless you're gonna make them be on a building eligibility, I don't, I see that's not fair. But there's also problems. I mean, we, I know this is happening because I've seen them, people posting stuff out in Kennedy County taking cargo containers, just like those big metal shipping containers and putting three or four of them together and suddenly they have a house. And I don't know, I just don't see this being very safe either, but because how do they insulate them and wiring and I don't know what they do.
I fixed phones in a, in a house that looked like a normal house, but when I went in the attic, I realized it had originally been a railroad boxcar. And then they had put a roof over it and expanded it.
So, uh, if you want us to continue on, we will. Otherwise, when this comes up, I'll say we discussed with the planning commission and they didn't feel like it was worthy of.
Keep your notes.
Further. I mean, we can, eh, and maybe the, maybe the county commission's gonna say, you know, no, we want, we wanna accommodate tiny houses. I just don't see them fitting in our, how we are developing in the county when I don't see, I don't ever see small houses being built. I just see, you know, mega mansions that are six, seven hundred thousand dollar houses. I just don't see anyone wanting to fit in a tiny house, but.
The smaller houses are in the older neighborhoods. Um, they're still there.
They're still there.
But a lot of them, no, no, not, not in those, not in those particular areas in town. But for somebody to try to do a s- a smaller tiny house on a lot itself with what the lots are running right now, it, they're, yeah, it just doesn't work, folks. No, they're in, I don't know, like I said, I don't know how the hell they would finance them.
When, when people wanna put one in, they can bring us an ordinance for us to approve or not approve. But in the meantime, forget it.
Eh, eh, the, I, to city of Sioux Falls, if I'm not mistaken, I'll just bring this up. I believe that they do allow what's called accessory dwelling units in in most zoning districts, which would accommodate things like a tiny house. But it's primarily that you wait, from what I've seen or what I've heard, is that you have a dwelling unit above a garage or it's a, a small house at, in the basement of the house, so you have two houses in the one lot, that sort of thing.
The permanent thing in my mind where you're, you're having an inspection, you're having a structural engineer looking at it if needed or, you know, whatever the case may be. It's not just a.
Rolling, rolling up.
Roll off unit.
Palace, even a palace, who knows what.
It's gonna say if they want a place for grandma and grandpa, they can add on to the house and put in some sliding taddy, some sliding doors for privacy and.
I'm gonna build a tiny casino and you'll never know where it's gonna end. We'll just show up and have a party.
We won't, we won't consider any of it, but I think I got that, unless someone has strong feeling they need to do something.
I have a question. I drove by the property along the interstate out by Hartford the other day. I had occasion to go out there. It, um, you know, it, it looks kinda rough.
Which one, the junkyard?
The salvage yard?
Yeah, it's so bad out there.
Kevin's done a lot of research on that and his grandfather again and uh.
Oh, the, the old one?
The, the one that's on the west or east of Brower, east, yeah.
That one's been there, that's been there for a long time, yeah.
That's been there a long time.
The other one, we have to do a code enforcement. We started a code enforcement on the one in Brower's.
Go ahead, Tony, turn it off.
We're done. Thanks.
We're done. Thank you.
Man, I went down, looked at that one house.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for all your hard work, you guys.
Sorry, I get ticky tacky on cows and cattle.